We're in the intro.
Okay. Morning, Akeem.
Hey, good morning, Chairman. We're not there yet.
Okay.
Scroll is in. One minute away. Thirty away. Twenty. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Akeem Ashford, Director of Communications for Cedric County. Welcome to the Wednesday, October 6, 2021 Board of County Commission meeting. Starting off this morning, Commissioners, I'd start off with a couple of COVID-19 updates. The first one being the Cedric County Health Department recently moved and started operating on the 4115 East Harry location. This is the old Harry Mall to many people. Started offering no-cost sampling at this location. We've got signage up to let people know that the building is marked in between the big lots and then also com care that's there. So it's kind of set off so people can look for the location there. And then you kind of walk through, you get checked in, and then you actually get your testing back in one of the testing location rooms. For more information on that, you can always go to cedriccounty.org. Got the page pulled up here. And then also, there's other testing site locators on that page as well. Vaccine clinic hours change in appointments only for the Cedric County Third Dose, beginning Wednesday, September 29, 2021. No-cost Pfizer COVID-19 booster vaccines will be offered by the Cedric County Health Department at the Community Vaccine Clinic. That's at the 223 South Main location, which is also known as the former Wichita Library. Cedric County Health Department mobile clinics will not provide booster doses at this time. So that's a good, that's a good note for people to know. Due to the anticipated demand for booster doses, several changes are occurring at that community vaccine clinic. Clients must schedule appointments for all vaccine doses. This includes that third dose as well. There will be no walk-ins at the community vaccine clinic, and people should also bring documentation of their first and second doses. So you have to get that first and second dose before you're able to get that third dose. Clinic hours will also change to 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, and 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Fridays and Saturdays. The clinic is closed, so Fridays and Saturdays, excuse me, Commissioners. And then moving on, the Slosson family, we'd like to say thank you to them and also to the Cedric County Zoo for allowing us, Cedric County, to be a part of a recent ribbon-cutting for the Asian Big Cat Truck. Chairman Meitzner, as you can see there, was on hand to actually help cut the ribbon. So this exhibit is very near and dear to the zoo and to many in this area. As you know, the Slosson family are big supporters of the zoo and wanted to bring the big cats back to the zoo. So this is a really cool exhibit. I haven't been out there yet, but hopefully get out there myself at some point with my son. Chairman, I don't know if you had any thoughts on this that you wanted to share?
Very nice. It was a large crowd that attended, and the big cat exhibit is impressive. Commissioner Dennis was there, and the scissors were really big, kind of like the cat. So it was a good event. So, thank you. Thanks for the zoo to allow me to say a few words and continues to have positive momentum for our whole community, without a doubt.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman. Staying with the Cedric County Zoo, Wild Lights at Cedric County Zoo. This is an exhibit many people were looking forward to. It is now there. You can actually go to scz.org for more information. The event runs from October 1st to December 5th. All right, Commissioners, I think we're going to now move to swearing-in of Brandy Bailey, who's our next treasurer. Judge Quentin Pittman is on Zoom with Brandy, and I'll turn it over to you, Judge.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Brandy. Not sure if you can hear us.
I'm so sorry, Brandy. Judge Pittman, I'll turn it over to you for the swearing-in of Brandy.
All right, thank you. Ms. Bailey, would you raise your right hand? Now, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of Cedric County Treasurer.
And faithfully discharge the duties of Cedric County Treasurer.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Brandy, congratulations. If you'd like to say a few words, I believe the crowd here, this is the first time we've ever had a swearing-in by Zoom. It's only appropriate that that happened.
Unfortunately, I had to do this by Zoom. I wish I could have been there in person to do it. I've been looking for it for 11 months now, and the week that I need to do it, I can't be there in person. But it is what it is. I'm excited about taking over next week. Linda has done a good job in her, in her position for the last several years, and I'm looking forward to improving upon what she's already got started and just making the Treasurer's Office be very efficient. And I'm looking forward to working with you Commissioners to get things accomplished.
Okay. Thank you. Well, our congratulations from the Commission, for sure, and we look forward to working with you. So.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay.
All right, Chairman. Taking a quick look at our agenda for today, you have a proclamation declaring Police Week, followed by several appointments. Under New Business, Commissioners, you have a funding request of $150,000 to support the workforce of the future project of Deloitte. Acknowledgement of the donation made by several county departments to the Department of Corrections. Under Item N and O, you have several zoning changes, 00034. This is a county conditional use for vehicle storage yard for recreational vehicles and boats on property zone RR Rural Residential in the Goddard area of Influence. And then under Zone 00036, this is a county conditional use to permit a temporary rock crusher on property zone SF 20 in a single-family residential area. Item P, a resolution creating new Cedric County personnel policies and procedures. This is an ongoing conversation that you've heard from, led by Sheena Smuts, Chief Human Resources Officer. Item Q, a resolution creating new Cedric County personnel policies and procedures regarding the employee code of ethics continued. And then Item R is a report of the Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting from September 30th. With that, Chairman, I'll turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Akeem. Good morning, everybody. We will officially call the order of the Board of Cedric County Commissioners for Wednesday, October 6. Before we get started, just want to let you all know, and maybe remind later, there's a very important ARPA meeting at 11:30 today downtown, and some of the Commissioners want to attend that because it's got the state ARPA, first kind of disclosure of ARPA. So, and we do have an executive session as well today. So if we get our business and our executive session done by 11:30, that's great. If not, we will plan to recess. Patricia will recess at 11:30 till 1:00 or 1:15, and then reconvene at that time. Because the executive, executive session is scheduled for how long, about?
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes, okay. So we'll see how the meeting goes this morning. And with that, we will officially call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Incavation. To be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Commissioners, I understand that we did not receive any emails on the public agenda item, so we don't have that. We did have a couple of people sign up for public comment, but they want to speak during the agenda item at that time. So with that, I don't think we have any public agenda unless somebody has shown up at the last second to address the Commission, and I don't see anything. So we will close the public agenda. Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of September 8, 2021.
Okay, Commissioners, consistent with what we've done in the past, I'd like to combine Item A, B, and C together, which are all the minutes of the September 8, the September 15, and the September 22, the minutes of those regular meetings. Does anybody have any thing that they would like to address during those? And if not, I'll make a motion that we approve Items A, B, and C. There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Proclamations. Item D, proclamation declaring Police Week.
Commissioners, we do have a proclamation, and I'll read it proudly. Whereas in 1962, the United States Congress first passed public law 87-726, designating May 15 of each year as Peace Officers Memorial Day, honoring federal, state, local officers who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty and the corresponding week as Police Week. And whereas over the years, devoted law enforcement officers of America have courageously sacrificed their personal safety while working on behalf of the people. And whereas because of their steadfast efforts to enforce our laws, we as citizens can enjoy a system of peace and order. And whereas Cedric County desires to honor the valor, service, and dedication of not only its own sheriff deputies, but peace officers everywhere. And whereas uncertainties related to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic compelled national organizations to cancel events scheduled during the week of May 15, 2021. So therefore, be it resolved that I, Chairman Peter F. Meitzner, and the Board of Cedric County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 10 through 16, 2021, as Police Week in Cedric County, and call upon our citizens to show their sincere appreciation for the many law enforcement officers of Cedric County, past, present, and their legacy of humble, dedicated service to the community. Commissioners, I make a motion that we pass this proclamation. There's a motion and a second. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And here to accept the proclamation is our one and only Sheriff, Sheriff Jeff Easter. Thank you for being here.
Thank you again for the proclamation and for the support that the Commissioners in Cedric County here have always shown, the Sheriff's Office and other law enforcement agencies throughout the county. We will be traveling up to Topeka for the State Memorial on Friday, and then we will have our memorial, I believe it's next Wednesday. It will be outside only, weather's permitting. So thank you again for everybody's commitment to law enforcement in this trying time, and we do appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff. It's been, it's been a trying 20 months, for sure, including all your sheriff's deputies that work in the jail, and then the ones in the public, and then our local police departments in the whole community out amongst the, not knowing who has COVID or not when they're talking to an accident or go to any police required service incident. So it's been tough, been very tough, and we recognize that. Hopefully, we've been trying to help reward as best we can and support you.
Absolutely. We appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Sheriff Easter. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item E, accept the removal of Neil Fogg from the Cedric County 5th District Citizens Advisory Board.
Okay. And for those in the audience, before New Business, we have about five or six appointments that go pretty routinely, and then we will be getting to New Business. Okay, Patricia, welcome.
Thank you. Patricia Parker, Deputy County Counselor. Commissioners, you have before you an item to accept the removal of Neil Fogg from the Cedric County 5th District Citizens Advisory Board as recommended by Commissioner Jim Howell. I recommend that you accept the approval.
Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just want to say, I appreciate, I do appreciate his service to the board, but I think he's had numerous conflicts and has not been able to participate the way I think we would all like. And so it's unfortunate that he has to step away, but I do want to thank, I do want to thank him for his service, and I appreciate his interest in serving Cedric County. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We adopt the proclamation.
I'll second that.
Adopt the resolution.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item F, accept the resignation of Valerie White from the Cedric County 1st District Citizens Advisory Board.
Commissioners, you have before you the resignation of Valerie White from the Cedric County 1st District Citizens Advisory Board, and I recommend that you accept the resignation.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, actually, thank you, Valerie White, for trying to be, to be on this board, and that we discovered that her residence address was right outside the boundaries of District 1, so not eligible to be serving. So with that, I'd like to accept the resignation of Valerie White.
Second.
Motion, second. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item G, resolution appointing Stephen Bossman to the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department Board of Electrical Appeals in the joint public-at-large position.
Okay. Patricia?
Thank you. Commissioners, you have a resolution appointing Mr. Bossman to the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department Board of Electrical Appeals in the joint public-at-large position. I recommend that you adopt the resolution.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution for Steve Bossman.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. No other comments. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item H, resolution reappointing the following members to the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department Board of Electrical Appeals in various positions.
Patricia, please.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have a resolution reappointing Casey Belknap, Dwayne Schneider, and Christopher Vale to the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department Board of Electrical Appeals in these various positions, and I recommend that you adopt the resolution.
Okay. Commissioners, you've seen, been presented with the following members. So any other comments? Being none, I'll make a motion. We approve the resolution reappointing those members. There's a motion and a second. No other comment. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item I, resolution reappointing Chief Darrell Atterbury to the Cedric County Regional Forensic Science Center Advisory Board.
Patricia again.
Thank you. We're almost through. Commissioners, I recommend that you pass the resolution reappointing Chief Darrell Atterbury to the Cedric County Regional Forensic Science Center Advisory Board as recommended by Dr. Shelley Stedman, Director of the Regional Forensic Science Center.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve Chief Darrell Atterbury to this board.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Chief Darrell, it's good to see you. And thank you for serving on this incredibly important board.
Good morning, Commissioners. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Cedric County Regional Forensic Science Center Advisory Board. So help me God. I do.
Chief, can I say anything?
It's a pleasure being able to serve the community on, yes, this very important board. The work done there is often unrealized, but it is very important, and I appreciate being a part of it. Thank you.
Right. Well, so Shelley Stedman, when she addressed this, she promised that with your addition, that now these cases will be solved, just like they are on TV, in 50 minutes.
Believe everything she said.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Chief. Good to see you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item J, resolution reappointing Dr. Ronald Varner to the Cedric County Regional Forensic Science Center Advisory Board.
Okay, Patricia?
Thank you. Commissioners, you have before you a resolution reappointing Dr. Varner to the Cedric County Regional Forensic Science Center Advisory Board as recommended by Dr. Shelley Stedman. I recommend that you adopt the resolution.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the reappointment of Dr. Varner. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. I don't think he's here. So Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item K, resolution reappointing 4th District County Commissioner Lacy Cruz and 5th District County Commissioner Jim Howell to the Chief Elected Officials Board.
Okay. Patricia?
Commissioners, you have in front of you a resolution reappointing 4th District County Commissioner Lacy Cruz and 5th District County Commissioner Jim Howell to the Chief Elected Officials Board, and I recommend that you adopt the resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Cruz, for agreeing to serve on this, on this board. I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you, and thanks again for serving on that. Okay, Madam Clerk, New Business.
New Business. Item L, funding request of $150,000 to support the workforce of the future project by Deloitte.
Hello, Brent. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Meitzner. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, Deputy CFO in the Division of Finance. As you all know, the Greater Wichita Partnership is the lead agency that's focused on promoting economic development in Wichita, Cedric County, and in the surrounding 10 county region. As they execute the regional growth plan, the partnership attracts new businesses, and they help with business retention and expansion efforts, those companies that are currently doing business in our area. Now, a key component of the success, if not the key component of that success, is having a talented workforce that's ready for the jobs of today and is prepared to grow and develop the capacity for the jobs of tomorrow. This morning, we're going to hear from Jeff Flure, who's the President of the Greater Wichita Partnership. Keith Lawing, Dr. Sheri Utash, and Scott Schwendeman are also here, representing workforce, education, and industry, about an opportunity to participate in a 12-week program that would provide us a plan of action to develop our workforce for the changing jobs and opportunities of tomorrow. The funding request for this item of the county is $150,000. That will complete a $500,000 funding stack. The other participants are the City of Wichita, the State of Kansas, Workforce Alliance, and the Greater Wichita Partnership. Counting funding would come from the economic development budget in the general fund. This item was on the city council agenda yesterday, and they, as we will explore the applicability or the eligibility of this funding with ARPA dollars, but we just don't have final guidance yet, so we can't make that determination at this time. At the conclusion of the remarks this morning, I, as well as the other speakers, are available to answer questions, and it is staff's recommendation to approve the funding request of the Greater Wichita Partnership for the Deloitte workforce of the future project. Let me now give control to Jeff Flure, who's the President of the Greater Wichita Partnership.
Thanks, Brent. Good morning, Jeff. Welcome to the Commission meeting.
Good morning, sir. And Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Manager, for being here today. And first, I want to say thank you for the partnership that we have with you. We've had this for a number of years, working on a lot of different initiatives to move the economic development of our community, our region, forward. We're seeing progress, even in the light of all the things that we've been walking through as a community over the last 20 months. We are seeing moments of opportunity, if you will, for business expansions and relocations here. So a lot of things are happening for our region, and we really believe this is another essential part of what we need in our equation as we continue to move forward to develop this region. I will tell you that as we get into conversations about projects, whether, again, it's an expansion or an attraction, talent gets into the conversation almost within two to three seconds in the conversation. Just what is the pipeline of talent? What was the availability of talent in your region or in your state even to do what we want to do? And so, again, how we position ourselves is extremely important. The other thing I would just note is that I think in this moment of economic recovery, there are moments that I think regions and states can differentiate themselves. We've seen this happen time and time again, cities like Austin, where they have really stepped into technological moments, Nashville with healthcare. I think this is a moment for us to look at talent as that differentiator for our community, because we have some great assets. Brent mentioned that we have Dr. Sheri Utash, President of WSU Tech, and Vice President of Workforce Development with us from LSU, I mean WSU. And the thing with Sheri is, as you know, WSU Tech, the incredible asset that is, a lot of states don't have that. We do. So I think mobilizing Sheri and that work can be incredibly important for us as we go forward. Keith Lawing, with the President of Workforce Alliance at South Central Kansas, also great resources, that Keith's going to talk about, that they feel can mobilize this as well. And then Scott Schwendeman- And then Scott Swindeman's unique, I think, lens from industry and how this, we can speak into what can happen as we work with industry going forward. So I'm going to talk briefly about the project that you're considering today, and again, we do appreciate this, this request before you and your consideration. At the core of this work are fundamentally two things. One is that we want to understand how current jobs are evolving, as far as what is it that technology is bringing into automation with some of the positions that are currently in place? So how is it that we can foresee that and help upskill talent that's currently in their positions so that they can continue to have the relevancy in that opportunity that they work in today? The other part of it is, is understanding the jobs of the future. A lot of things have changed. It was already changing before the pandemic. Now it's just been accelerated to a point now where it's, how is it we look to the future to understand what those opportunities are? Let's see here. There we go. So as I mentioned, the pandemic has accelerated a number of things through artificial intelligence, robotics, smart manufacturing, all those things have been accelerating. We also know that with all these transformations, there are also great opportunities for new jobs, and it's estimated that there could be over 97 new jobs or roles emerging that we would have in the workforce that aren't even in position today. So how is it we understand that and actually be able to, to step into those in a way with the training that is needed? We also know, from an employee point of view, that eight out of 10 individuals on jobs today don't feel well-equipped to be able to step into the new technological changes that are happening. You know, as I think about what has been happening to us as, as an individual over the last year, think about how remote work has now been introduced as a, as a viable way of industry to conduct business, but then also the countless number of Zoom team meetings now that we have, and just the fact that that's an acceptable format now to conduct a lot of business. Those are new elements that have been introduced into the workforce, just as examples of how this environment continues to change, and we expect those will continue as we move forward. The other component of this that we think is really important is understanding that 47.5%, this is a, this is a quote from Brookings, which we refer to a lot as we do work. Again, this is a point to say that 47.5% of tasks that we have in current jobs, now components of a person's job, 47% of those, .5, have the opportunity for automation. It's probably going to happen. It's going to happen. And so, again, how is it that we prepare for that? There's a susceptibility of being able to be ready, to be able to make sure that we're stepping into that correctly. The point is, though, too, is that not only are we in this position, but other regions and states are as well. So how we step into this is really important. So that's why we feel like this work with Deloitte is timely, that we do it now, as we start to get more so into economic recovery to understand what the landscape is as we go forward. Deloitte is a global partner. There's a number of reasons why we feel like they are the right one. I think every Commissioner had the opportunity to tour the Smart Factory, to see what Deloitte is doing at WSU's campus, at the Innovation Campus. It's incredible what they're thinking and doing, and I know Scott will talk to that a little bit in a moment, but again, they're working with industry across all industry sectors. It's not just manufacturing to say, where are industries going, and how do we help you understand how you need to step into that? So Deloitte has done incredible work, and they are pioneers, actually, in human capital and industry research. And so they're bringing their expertise to us as a part of this process as well. So they have a vast amount of proprietary research. They're constantly doing research in this field of understanding what's happening with human capital and, and industry development. They have top thought leaders in this area. I will tell you that Deloitte, in our conversations with them internally, they want to work on this project because they do believe it is that forward-thinking for communities to be thinking the way that we are today. They are dedicated to putting people at the center, and they really are focusing in on diversity, inclusion, and equity as an integral part of the process that we'll be talking about. And they've also worked with a number of industry leaders across industry sectors. So again, bringing that vast knowledge into a focal point for us to be able to walk through that with, with our team as we go forward. We also have a very aggressive timeline. Once we start this work, we're looking at approximately 12 weeks to complete it. This slide here begins to show you all the different segments of that timeline. We're prepared and have on our team, we've actually engaged a project manager for this work. We also have enlisted other individuals to serve on this team so that we have that feedback, but then we'll also be going out into the community to speaking to a number of companies, both large and small, about what they're seeing and how is it that we can begin to help to interpret that. And so what will happen is, we get this work going, we'll start to have these moments of engagement, and our commitment to you is that we'll keep you engaged, we'll keep you informed on where we're seeing the progress and what are the next steps that we anticipate we'll be walking into. This slide gives you deliverables in particular as it relates to Deloitte. Now, we'll have other outcomes that we'll, we'll speak into in a moment. Keith Lawing will be next to do that, but again, this is a roadmap where you'll see where first, first and foremost, it's a clear collaborative regional strategy, among other things. We're also looking at regional initiatives. So we anticipate, as they bring forth initiatives, there'll be initiatives that we will take on as the partnership, there'll be initiatives that Dr. Utash will at WSU Tech, Keith with Workforce Alliance, and other community partners. So just as we have done this with the regional growth plan, we see the same type of approach where we'll identify the initiatives, and then partners will step forward to be able to lead these things in a way of implementation. And then also, the data analysis summary report, one of the things, we just got back from the city-to-city visit to OKC, Oklahoma City, and research was in, was a thread through all the conversations, really understanding where they are today, but importantly, where they want to go. And so how is it you understand that and bring that together is really important. We feel like Deloitte will bring that to us as it relates to talent as we take this step forward. And then also, there's a number of things from design lab summaries to also initiative gap assessments, so all this will be part of what Deloitte delivers. And again, the great thing with them is that they've been doing this for a number of years as far as with talent development. Now they're going to apply it to our region and to our state. At this time, I'm going to have Keith Lawing come forward, again, the President, CEO of Workforce Alliance of South Central Kansas, to talk through some of the community outcomes that we expect to see from this work. So Keith?
Thanks, Jeff. Good morning, Keith. Welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Chairman Meitzner, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here today. Yes, Keith Lawing, Workforce Alliance of South Central Kansas, and I certainly echo Jeff's excitement about the proposal, the project we have for you today. And one of the reasons Workforce Alliance is supporting this project is a realization of the significant change that technology is creating in the primary employment sectors that drive our economy, you know, manufacturing, agriculture, healthcare, and information technology, and in fact, the bottom line is almost every company in some form or another is now a tech company. And it's changing how we hire and how we train workers. A question that we often get at the Wichita Workforce Center is, what skills training program should, will help me get a good job? Or how can I get the skills to help me, set me up for a great career? The results of the Future For Work project will help us answer these questions and provide the right kind of support to connect job seekers to the opportunities that will lead to multiple high-quality career options here in our region. And I think one of the most, to me, important outcomes of this project is going to be, as I think Jeff said, provide a clear focus amongst multiple partners, our partners in business, the public sector, and education, on coordinated strategies rather than splitting off and doing well-intentioned but uncoordinated efforts to try to solve these issues before us. And one of the slides here before you, it's Slide 8 here, is again, it is how that alignment would, would help us create these career pathways. And some examples of what we've done in the past that have worked very well, that I would anticipate would be results from this, would be the expansion right now of work-based learning projects for high school students. How can we do applied learning, which is happening in Wichita State University, into the high schools to make kids more prepared, not only for college, but career opportunities? Looking at the affiliation with Wichita State University and WSU Tech, and creating those pathways, the Shocker Pathway, the Aviation Career Pathway, you know, enrollment is up at Wichita WSU Tech, and I think primarily is because people are starting to see a direct pathway to great quality career opportunities. We think this Deloitte project will help example, amplify that effort. There's also two immediate outcomes from having this regional strategy for the Workforce Alliance, and first, it's going to provide guidance for us on the four-year, $9.9 million grant we received earlier this year, the One Workforce Grant. That is really focusing on the intersection of technology and manufacturing, and in that application, we referenced the Deloitte Smart Factory project several times, and so we really want to use this as a centerpiece to help launch some of these opportunities for careers in the future. And second, I think it'll help our region be even more competitive for future funding opportunities. Right now, we're looking at some EDA grants that are specifically designed to enhance regional economic competitiveness. The results from this study are going to help us in those applications, and a very competitive process with other regions and other states and cities from across the nation, how, we will stand out, and we'll have a better chance of receiving those federal dollars that are going to be made available. And another impact, what I anticipate would be resulting from this, it's going to really relate to how the Workforce Alliance interacts with the Greater Wichita Partnership. And I've been doing this job for a little over 15 years, and back when I started, we rarely ever talked to our economic development partners when they were engaging with a prospect that was thinking about moving to Wichita, Sedgwick County, or a business that was going to expand. At this point in time, we're always at the table because, as Jeff said, workforce is one of the more, is the key element that employers are looking for in a factor in evaluation process of can they expand? Where do they want to locate? And those communities that can provide talent, that have the infrastructure to train potential workers, those are the communities that businesses want to locate in and want to expand in. Again, I'm very confident the results from this study will help us better define that. And then finally, to me, I think one of this, one of the region's biggest selling points with these kind of businesses is the world-class workforce that we have. We need to protect that, we need to nurture that. It's going to help us make the right investments in the community with the people that we work with every day. I mean, to me, I think the time is right for us, the community, we need to step up, and we need to boldly address the tsunami of change that is impacting this community to ensure that our family, our friends, or neighbors are going to be the ones to get these jobs that we're talking about. You know, and one of the other challenges that we have right now, and I was just talking to the chief outside a minute ago, everybody's asking me, where are the workers? How can we not have more applicants? You know, we have all these open jobs. People are reinventing themselves, and, and I think this is a project that will help us get people excited in this community for the opportunities, for new career opportunities, tech career opportunities. And so again, I think this will help us to stimulate the number of people interested in looking for work. And the other thing, finally, I'll say, is that when we're able to draw a direct line from skills, education, and training programs to employment, we have a much better opportunity to enroll people, to get people in those programs. And this is a topic that Dr. Utash and I have worked closely with over the years. We've seen the results of that. She has been on the front lines, have seen the impact of these skills training programs as they help us create jobs and protect the jobs we have, and I'm going to welcome Dr. Utash to the mic to make a few other comments and then be happy to answer any questions from the Commissioners. So I thank you very much for your time today.
Okay. Yes. Thank you, Keith. Good morning, Doctor.
Keith, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. So happy to be here this morning to speak a little bit about the educational perspective of this project. You know, like Keith and his team in education and K through 16, education works really closely with our business and industry. And I do, I want to reflect just for a moment, last week, many of us were on city-to-city, and I will say that one of the takeaways for me, and I think for others, from that trip was that we are, we're, we're doing really good work in this area, and we're far ahead of our neighbors to the south when it comes to integrating business and industry with education. And so we've done a really good job with this, and, and we continue to do a good job to create and understand the needs of our industries and then to be able to create an educated and trained workforce to meet their needs, both for today, tomorrow, and in the future. So we've done a good job, but this is a real challenge that we're facing. We are sitting here today as leaders probably did in the early 1920s, after the 1918 pandemic, and everything that happened, all the technology that was created in the 1920s, leaders just like all of us are sitting there, they were thinking about these things, they were struggling with what's the future look like? And so many things that came out of that Industrial Revolution, the, many of those things influenced our grandparents, our great-grandparents, our grandparents, our lives, and so we are sitting, to me, on that same historical piece. History always repeats itself. And as we look at this, we know that we've got change coming, and we know that we have disruption coming, and we need to better understand what that is. And so to engage subject matter experts like Deloitte, to really help us be thought leaders, to be able to ask us the questions that can, you know, provoke our minds from a business standpoint, from an education standpoint, from a community standpoint, to better understand where we're headed. We know that the types of jobs, we know types of jobs will be changing, and they'll be created over the next five years, the next 10 years. There's a lot of information that says one-third of the jobs by 2030, which is not very far away, one-third. We don't even know what they are. We don't even know the titles, we don't know what they mean, we don't know what that will entail from a knowledge and skill standpoint. So from an educational perspective, one key outcome of this project, we believe, will be guidance on how to build curriculum and how to build educational programs for K through 16, so that we're better prepared to enter this type of changing workforce. And we build programs educationally, and we do them well, but it takes time, it can't happen overnight, so we need to know what's coming. We also know that it takes money to build curriculum, and so our investment from an educational perspective comes after we have a clear strategy based on research and data. We can be told over and over, we need this, we need this, we need this, but unless we have the research and the data to back that up, you know, it's an investment, and so we want to make the investment in the right areas to do this. We also want to make sure that we're on the leading edge as a community, this city, this region, want to be a leading-edge provider of creating a talent pipeline that meets the future of work and makes our companies globally competitive. We also know that individual businesses, small, medium, large, they're all going to take technology from every sector, from every industry, and they're going to move technology in at their own rates. So one of the things I think we have to, you know, honor and respect and understand about the integration of technology into our workplaces is, is that as new manufacturing programs or new initiatives start in other industries, technology will certainly be a huge driver. For those, for, for the, for the production, particularly in the production environment that we have today, to retool and rescale all of that, to integrate massive technology is probably not going to happen. But any new program that comes in, any new things that we do, new companies that come in, they're all going to be driven by the integration of technology. So I think we have, we can't be fearful of this. We have to understand that there's an upscale, rescale that we need to do with our existing workforce, but super important is we have to be preparing our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren for the world of work, and it's going to look very different than it does today. So we need to do this regionally, we need to do this as a group, we need to answer the questions of why, we need to answer the questions of how, when, and what, and we need to understand what's the most critical thing for us to do next year, and then in three years, and then in five years, and in 10 and beyond. And I believe this roadmap will help inform us, and again, strongly, and strongly engage and impact the incredible relationship that education has with business and industry in this region. So from a business standpoint and a perspective, I'd like to invite Scott Swindeman to the podium, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sheri.
Chairman, Commissioners?
Good morning, Scott.
Scott Swindeman, and to give you just a real quick bio, you know, why am I standing here as a business leader to Commissioner Lopez? I don't know that we've spoke much there before now. Last year, I retired after 40, 40-some years in the industry as the CEO and President of Lubrication Engineers. Currently, I have a company called Onyx III, which is a holding company of various other manufacturing businesses across the United States. So I have a unique perspective of what business is running into out there, especially in manufacturing. At Lubrication Engineers, we took care worldwide of over 10,000 different manufacturers, and And once you understand that it's from small manufacturing, maybe just five people in a shop, all the way up to the, some of the largest manufacturing household names that you would know. And while we provided lubricants to them, we also, 50% of our business was engineering services to them and really looking at efficiencies and how did we improve their bottom-line profitability through their production process, which really allowed me to start see, seeing the digitalization and what technology was doing to manufacturing literally 10 years ago. You know, all industry is different, but as Dr. Utaash said, they're all going to be impacted by this technology change. I'll give you just one quick story. Five years ago, at a couple of national conferences, I was talking about the automotive industry, in particular, the internal combustion engine, which is in most of our cars out there today. And I was speaking to the people who produce engine oils that went in there. And there are some major manufacturers in the United States here today that I told them, I said, you better figure out what you're going to do because the internal combustion engine is going away. We're seeing electrification, we're seeing electric cars coming. At that time, the common thought in industry was it would be 2040, 2045 before we really started to see electric vehicles on the road. I was predicting at that time in my speech that by 2030, we would see the predominance of electric vehicles on our road. I can tell you, I had those major players, and these are major oil companies, after I made that presentation, challenged me to say, Scott, you're wrong, the internal combustion engine is not going away. Recently, last year, at that same conference, I had those same people coming up to me going, how did you understand that technology was going to move that quick? And quite frankly, there are two businesses that are struggling right now, the predominantly were engine oil manufacturers, that cannot figure out where they're going to go. This really isn't digitalization, but this is digitalization because we're moving to electric, we're moving to more computerized vehicles and stuff. So just one example of why we need to get our workforce here, ready to understand what that next avenue is that we're going through. And this is a major industrial revolution we're fixing to go through. As, as Dr. Utaash talked about the pandemic before, I think that's a great analogy. We are going to go through that again here because we know we need workforce and we are very short in this country, not just in Sedgwick County, but across the United States and really worldwide, to find workforce that can do these jobs for us there. You know, as I, as I've been out there in industry, one of the things that Jeff and others had asked me, I said, do you see companies that maybe are not going to accept this change? And one example that I can give you on that is one of the largest steel manufacturers in the world, US Steel. I get the privilege of going to the, to the garden spot of Gary, Indiana, to visit with them at their big steel plants. And when I'm there, they will not adapt any change. And today, as you, if you're in the building trades, you understand it's very difficult to get steel to build a building. You have about a 12 to 16-month lead time. That's because they are not adapting to this change. China and Brazil, you hear about the importation of steel, that's because of our demand. Our current manufacturers in this country cannot meet that demand, so the country will go wherever to get the steel. I'm hopeful US Steel will adapt, but you're looking at a, literally a company that's 200 years old, and I think we're going to see that as a slow death, that they are not going to be able to adapt. Take you a little closer here to Wichita, Kansas, 100 miles north here, there's a major pizza manufacturer, so let's get into the food industry. When we came in to look at their processes, they were losing 25% of their production off the end of the line before it was ever packaged. So think about that, that's one out of every five pizzas did not make it to the shelf. We were brought in to help them with doing some digitalization, improving their process. We took them down to 5% loss from the 25% loss, literally in 30 days through, through some digitalization work. We now, and I should say it's my past company, are taking care of all 17 of their food plants. But again, it's that revolution is starting to happen and improves efficiency. And every business will have to go through this in their time to remain competitive in the marketplace. If they don't do this, they will not be competitive. And if they can't find the workforce, then they can't be competitive too. And this transition, you know, we just need to come together, the regional strategy is what we're talking about here, and, and figure out what that roadmap is and what it is we need. We've done it before. You look at NCAT, Sedgwick County was very much so involved in that. And look at the success of that. And really, at the beginning of that, we just knew we had a need for workforce. We didn't know how many people we needed in that job, or, you know, how many jobs that was going to produce or save. We just knew that was the right thing. Now, as we went through it, we figured out what all those metrics were. But to get started, I don't know that we really had all of that. Same thing with our downtown master plan, too. One of the things that I want to do a shout out to Dr. Utaash and WSU Tech is, one of the new jobs that's coming, and she's helped me with identifying that, is called a reliability engineer or a reliability technician. 10 years ago, as LE started to do their engineering services and saw this digitalization, we knew we needed a person that was, an engineer that was trained in this area. There was not a university in the United States that was doing reliability, truly giving a reliability engineering degree. Typically, they were manufacturing engineers, chemical engineers, and they had some on-the-job training. I went to, actually got some people to understand at University of Auburn that this is something we need. And University of Auburn today is the only university in the United States that offers a reliability engineering degree. We needed reliability technicians and probably it was three or four years ago, I went to Dr. Utaash and I asked her, you know, what could we do to get a reliability technician training program here? And she talked earlier about, you know, it does take time and everything. I can tell you, we have a tremendous gem in this community with Dr. Utaash and WSU Tech because within eight months, we went from, here's what their training is, that she was starting to get kids enrolled, coming through that program that we could hire. And these jobs here, the engineering degree jobs are 120 to 130 right out of school. A technician will come out at 80 to 90,000. And that's what you want in your community. You want that wealth building. You want to train them and allow them to then get out and really have a good-paying job. And this is a job that's coming, that's going to be in high demand in industry for years to come and really helping this digitalization process and moving it forward. So, you know, imagine the positive impact of getting this study done here so we can direct our resources accordingly to get that workforce in place here in Sedgwick County. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Scott. Good information.
So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we've, we've presented a lot of information. I know we presented and provided some additional documents for you to review prior to today. You know, this, this has been under works for a while. The COVID-19 Task Force, which you all have helped us with, actually started out as the Aerospace Task Force when we, we were facing with the 737 Max right there in January of 2020, and then it, then it evolved into COVID-19. A lot of things have come out of that group. This is one of the things, one of the conversations. I remember Sherry calling me during the quarantine moment and saying, Jeff, I know we're dealing with, you know, the PPP and the PPE today, but we've got to be thinking about where are we going to be on the other side of this? And fortunately, she had had some conversations with MIT that planted some seeds of thought. And that's been cultivated, that's been cultivated over this time to get to where we are today. And so all the information that we've presented, hopefully demonstrates the depth of what we want to get out of this. One of the things that we, we have said before, and I think it, it helps to reiterate, this is a global conversation, it's just not North America, but global. And so I do think it's a moment for us to differentiate ourselves. The other commitment that we want to make sure that we, we say to you today, too, is that we started out saying how this will be integrated into the regional growth plan, it will be. That, that work is not sitting on a shelf, it is driving strategy. Right now, our pipeline, when we started the partnership back in 15, we had in the low 40s as far as in the pipeline, as far as projects. Today, it's almost 100. Andrew Nave on our team says, I want to double that again. And because you understand, not all of those will come out to, to fruition, but you continue to push. So these strategies do not set in our office, they are actually mobilized. And it's our commitment to you that that will happen with this, too. So again, appreciate the opportunity, appreciate Sherry and Keith and Scott also speaking into it. Mr. Chairman, we would turn it back to you, sir, for any questions that the commission may have, and we'd be glad for anybody to address those that need to, sir.
You know, thank you, Jeff. You know, it's been a, a lot to unpack on understanding this from the recent months, but it's been really helpful for, for Deloitte and you all to help educate us in the community and expand it further now to the, to the public, as you did yesterday at the city council meeting and today's with all this information. So it, it's really helpful to further understand what we would be committing to invest in our future from, from my perspective. So with that, see if there's any other comments before we make a motion here. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Chairman. Just say upfront, appreciated, I've appreciated the, the process that you guys followed this, this time. You brought us in early, helped, helped us understand exactly what was being proposed. If I was going to try to characterize it in my own words, I'd simply say it's a jump in technology, opportunities for, really for businesses everywhere, but especially for Wichita. And I, I think this is important to understand what, what is happening in technology. I love the, the stories that Scott just shared. I think that really kind of rings at home that if you don't innovate, then you'll be left behind and someone else will be innovating past you, so to speak. So your, your future success and your future competition really depends on being able to pivot with technology. I know one of the things in my future world, I'm sorry, my past world, I worked in flight test aviation, and I, I know that it takes a lot of technology to, to even create these ideas. So when you, when you want to innovate, the, the people that are behind the scenes that have to design, calibrate, repair, maintain, and upgrade those systems, they don't happen without really smart people. So the idea that we're going to replace jobs is really not, the way I would describe it, we're actually just, everyone's going to take a big step up, if you will. Anything that can be done through technology, I think, is, is on the table here. So it used to be blood, sweat, and tears, and now it's, now it's brains over that, that former way of doing things. And so I like the fact that, talk, someone mentioned WATC, and I think that, if I was going to describe what happened there, we, we invested on the front end and we have the dividends on the back end. We're, we're enjoying those dividends today because of the investment made a long time ago by former commission. And so I, I certainly am supportive of the proposal today. I think it's a good idea. I think we don't know where this is leading, but I know it's going to be good. So we do have the money in our budget for economic development investment in this community. This is a great fit for that budget. I do have one question for our staff, and I don't know, I think probably Brent might be the best person to ask. A lot of times, a lot of times when we have these types of things in our book, we have the, the contract or the agreement for us to review. I don't see that in this case. Is there one already been drafted?
There isn't a funding agreement between the county. And this is a, the agreement would be with the partnership and Deloitte for those deliverables. So we're just participating in that funding.
So what, what then we learned at our, at the en banc meeting we had a week ago, was that the city is talking about using ARPA funds, and you didn't mention that in your briefing. I'm just curious, if that turns out to be something we can do, is that still something that would be, would fit in our agreement today? If that's something that we find out is possible to do that legally, we would still be able to use that, ARPA funds as a source?
Yes, sir, we would.
Okay. To me, that's really my only, my only real question here. I think my final comment would be, I'd like to snap together electronic training tool that you guys showed us up there. One of these days, I want to see if I can buy one of those. That was a pretty cool little thing you showed us. Anyway, with that, Chairman, I would be ready to support a, a recommendation for adoption of this resolution at any time or make the motion if that's what you prefer.
Okay, Chairman. You bet. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the presentation today. Thank you additionally for the PowerPoint that you sent. I'm a little disappointed you didn't show my favorite slide, slide number 20, and it talks about the design of, with the future in mind. And it says, using outside-in thinking that challenges internally-held beliefs. So I think that, and, and it talks, you know, it gives the three structures of kind of what we're going to be talking about. So my question really is, you know, when we talk about technology for process improvement and efficiency, digitalization is one thing. When we talk about, you know, the history of moving from a person doing rivets to something that's electronic or, so I guess, I wonder how much of this, because we're talking future of work, how much of this will focus on the holistic way in which we expect a workforce to produce? So when we talk about, do we have a better efficiency when people work four days a week rather than five days a week? Do we talk about the next generation of kids coming up? My daughter, you know, they live on less, they expect less, they don't work, you know, long, gone are the days where someone stays at a job for 20, 30 years. So will this focus on any of that, or is it all just technology-based and how process improvements so we don't miss the pizzas on the end of the line?
Mr. Cruz, that's a great question. I have a freshman in college and I want to make sure he's doing what he needs to be doing, and so this is going to help me understand him a little bit more. No, in all seriousness, part of what Deloitte does is, it talks about the workplace, the workforce, and the work. So it's more of a holistic view, to your point, of understanding what is it we need to be mindful of, thoughtful of? And then how is it that we maximize those efficiencies within that? And so part of this will be, I think, a discovery for what that continues to look like because I think, again, the last 20 months, I think, has changed work, the workplace and the way that we approach work that if you went back to 2019, we would not have thought about, you know? And so part of it is, is really is asking those questions. I think as we go into it, we need to make sure that we are asking exactly what you stated so that as we are working with companies, whether it be, again, small or large, these are all the things, the criteria that we need to be thinking about. So that is, that is part of their three approach as far as looking, really breaking it down from the work, the workforce, and the workplace.
Awesome. I'm glad to hear that.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I, I also am really, Dr. Utaash, when you mentioned, you know, our world has changed. You know, I love Zoom calls because I learn people's names because it's right on the screen, right? So I mean, there are ways and efficiencies of me just, but I also hate it because I don't get to see people in person. So, you know, I think this is the perfect time for us to be forward-thinking, and so I'm, I'm, I'm happy to support this proposal today, and I look forward to the results in the sense of the holistic way in which we expect a workforce to produce.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, thanks to everyone for being here and briefing us today. A couple of things, we're going to invest $150,000 at the end of this. And what I ask is really a couple of other things on deliverables. One, I'd like the commission, either at a staff meeting or at a board meeting, so that the public can see what's going on. I'd like a briefing of what the plan is once it's produced, so, so that everybody understands what we're, what we're getting for the money. And then this, I, I expect great things in the future out of this, but what I'd like to also see is follow-up briefings then to see what the impact of this is going to have on our economy, on the businesses, on education, and so forth. So if you could also come back periodically, like every six months, and give us an update on those type of things.
Commissioner, I think you hit a really good point in that we view this as an investment. You know, part of the partnership is comprised by the private sector, and, and they also make investments based on ROI. You know, what's happening with the, how are we leveraging their investment is yours as well, and then what are the outcomes? And then how are we continuing to push what we need to be pushing? And so we definitely want to make sure that we're communicating that information because we look at it as an investment in what you're making today, that will be coupled with, you know, what Lieutenant Governor has done with Commerce, what we're, we're investing in this as well, private sector dollars from the partnership's position, along with Mr. Loyn with Workforce Alliance. And so we will view that as an investment and definitely will come back to talk to you about what that return is looking like, sir.
Good, I appreciate that. One final comment is, I know you mentioned K-12 in here, but remember, I worked in K-12, I was on the State Board of Education. That is a ship that goes down the road, down the water, and it steers very difficultly. It does not turn very fast. And the leaders that you need for the future for, to make this a reality are in our classrooms today. So I'm hoping that we find some way that we can reach down into that K-12 area to make sure that we are producing the workforce out of our K-12 to go into Sherry's organization, into colleges, to be college and career-ready. I know we talked about that a lot, all the time on college and career-ready. I also realize a lot of times why they're more interested in the college-ready and kind of forget the career-ready side. And so I, I hope we're digging down into the K-12, we involve the leaders at the State Board of Education, at Kansas State Department of Education, and our, our local school districts in this in the future so that we are preparing the students to go into the workforce.
Commissioner Dennis, I'm really anxious to respond to that, your, your comment there. And definitely, you, you, we are going to be there in that position. I am currently chair, co-chairing a work-based learning task force for the Governor's Education Council. We're working with a lot of the folks you just mentioned, Dr. Watson and his team with the Department of Education. But the whole But the whole concept is how can we replicate work-based learning opportunities in, for high school students at workplaces, where they can earn academic credit for that process? So this report, what we're going to demonstrate here, is how can we do that? How can we get those high school students on these, in these companies before they graduate high school, so they can make that decision, is college right for me, or do I have the career tracks? But no, you're spot-on. It will definitely be a big part of the outcomes, and what this study will do will help drive what I think the folks at K through 12 are trying to accomplish right now in some of their programs. So very much a big part of it.
If I might, I'd just like to just add one quick comment to that. We work, you know, not only WSU Tech, but the two-year system throughout the state of Kansas works very closely with our high school students with our Excel and CTE program. And so that provides juniors and seniors in high school that opportunity to begin a career in technical education before they finish high school. The state pays the tuition for that. So for instance, this year, we have over 3,000 high school students that are in that program at WSU Tech. So part of what this will do, and to your point, which is a great point, is those students are going to be the ones that will be the recipients and be able to be involved in these, whatever these new educational programs we build based on this roadmap, they'll be able to be the first ones to be involved in those programs. The other thing is, is that we're working with a lot of industry and with our middle schools to really get down into the middle schools and start talking to kids at a much younger level, middle schools, and then hopefully elementary. And so a lot of the work that we're going to do with that, with that group will be informed by this, because that is the workforce of the future. So we need to start helping them understand what those jobs look like. Just like today, you know, we struggle. Everybody knows what a nurse is, everybody knows what a teacher is, but people don't know what a predictive reliability engineer is, or they don't know what a climate energy control technician is, or a composite repair technician. So we have to be able to exemplify, demonstrate, you know, show young people all these opportunities of careers that they have. I mean, you think about digital marketing careers, five years ago, we really weren't even talking about that. Now that is a big push of what we're doing. Our digital marketing program is just going gangbusters. So if you think about it, you know, what you're saying is exactly right, and they need to be within that system. And I think part of all the work, I also would just say, I was at a conference just across the street, or down the street this week, the Workforce Innovation Conference, and at that conference, one of the keynotes was Blake Flanders, who's the President of the Kansas Board of Regents, Alan Cobb, President of Kansas Chamber of Commerce, and Randy, Dr. Randy Watson, President of the Kansas Department of Education, talking about the integration of those three entities to work together in order to make sure that we're providing appropriate education, training, and just understanding of what work looks like for the future. So it's a really, really good time. You know, everybody is on, everybody's singing this same song. So the timing is really good, and I think we've got great momentum, not only here in the city, the county, and our region, but really across the state of Kansas.
Well, thank you, Dr. Utesh and Keith. I know that Senate Bill 55 has got a lot of students out of high school coming to WSU Tech and other places in order to get the technology that they need to move to the future. And I know it's not your issue, it's been something that's concerned me for an awful long time. It only takes 21 credits to graduate from high school. If you take seven credits a year, you're pretty well finished in three years, but you still have a fourth language art and a half a credit for, for history and so forth. So I worry about that senior year. I'm hoping that we can now use Senate Bill 55 and that senior year, move some of those students over to places like WSU Tech, so that they can be ready for college and career-ready rather than floating through their senior year and then not being ready to go into the workforce. That's been a concern of mine for an awful long time, so I use this opportunity to tell everybody. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You bet. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. I can't tell you how many times I've been in conversations talking about how do we retain and attract our young talent? And, and that's obviously going to be a multifaceted approach, but I do think technology is a really big piece of that, and so I'm excited that we're bringing this here, and I truly believe that innovation is the key to a company's success, it's going to be key to our community's success, and I love that we're getting in front of it with Deloitte. But, you know, coming from the technology world, I can, I know how fast this changes, and I can't imagine for some organizations, they probably don't know where to start, but they also don't know where they're supposed to get to. And so how do they figure out, really, what their future looks like without those, without that help? And so I think this is going to be extremely helpful to organizations, and I'm sure they're going to be really happy to have this in our backyard and be able to use that and utilize that in that way, because this is the direction we're heading as a society anyway. And so I'm, I'm really thankful that we're going to be leading some of this and not just waiting for it to get here, and then we don't have the workforce ready and we can't attract any new organizations to come here, but then we're continuing to lose those young professionals. So I think this is a huge part of, you know, retaining that talent here, and I'm so excited. And I love that Deloitte is seeing really the importance of collaboration and getting in schools and having, you know, share here with, looking at WSU Tech. And I just, I can't wait to see what this comes, you know, what comes of this in five, 10 years and beyond that. And so I just want to thank you all for coming and, you know, talking about this and, and letting the public know just how, you know, incredible this opportunity can be for Wichita and our region, and I'm excited to be a part of it. Thank you, guys.
Yep. Good comments, Commissioner. I don't see any others. Commissioner Howe, did you want to make the motion, as you stated before? Or a motion?
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We would just, we would approve the funding request as presented.
I'll second that. It's a motion and a second. Any other comments? There's been some great comments leading up to this, so thank you again. So I want to see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you all. Looking forward to a bright tomorrow. All right? We'll let the room clear here. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item M, acknowledgment of a donation made by several county departments to the Department of Corrections.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Steve Stonehouse, I'm with Abigail Lesman from the Department of Corrections, and we're here to tell you the results of a book drive held in August. Abigail was the driving force behind the book drive, and six county departments and the Office of the Public Defenders donated over 800 books to the Department of Corrections for use in the library at the juvenile detention facility, the juvenile residential facility, and the adult work release program. The county departments donating books were the Department of Corrections, Aging, Health, Sheriff's Office, Purchasing and Public Works. So I recommend that you accept the donations and some letters of appreciation for their support of the residents in these programs to the staff members who participated.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions from the commission about this donation? I don't see any. I'll make a motion that we acknowledge the donation made by several county departments to the Department of Corrections. It's a motion and a second. Being no other comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. You bet. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item N, C O N 2021-00034, county conditional use for vehicle storage yard for recreational vehicles and boats on property zone RR Royal Residential in the guarded area of influence, generally located in the east side of South 199th Street West and within one-quarter mile south of West 6th Street South, 740 South 199th Street West.
Okay, and before we proceed with this item, I need to declare any ex parte communications. And I might have had an email or two, but I did have a letter. I'll disclose I had quite a packaged letter from Vicky Strelo that I received, so I'll disclose that. And I don't think I've had any others. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. I'd like to declare that I've had ex parte contact on this zoning case, and we'll do the same thing on the next zoning case.
Okay. Commissioners, any others? Commissioner Lopez.
I received an email the other day as well, so I found that.
Okay. And Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. I think I received just one email as well. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
I'm not sure if I received an email. My inbox is pretty full, so I'm sorry if I missed it.
Okay. So we've covered the ex parte communications. Okay. Scott, welcome to the meeting.
Good morning. Thank you. So this case is a request for a conditional use in order to allow for vehicle storage yard for recreational vehicles and boats. Subject's site is located in the unincorporated Cedric County, is generally southeast of the intersection of 199th and 6th Street, near Goddard. The site is roughly 4.6 acres in size. It's currently zoned rural residential and in use for large lot residential. Vehicle storage is not currently occurring on the site. The recommendation for approval of the conditional use to utilize the property for vehicle storage includes the following conditions, which are, which I will comment on, and they're identified in greater detail in the staff report. In terms of location, the storage area must be located behind the principal structure, which is the house. In terms of area, the storage area cannot exceed 10,000 square feet. For use, only operable vehicles, and it shall be limited to boats and RVs. In terms of setbacks, the vehicles must be at least 20 feet away from any residences constructed before this approval, unless the owner can demonstrate sufficient screening. In terms of paving and surfacing, the entrance, exit, and storage area must have all-weather surfacing, which can include crushed rock. In terms of screening, the storage area must have a six-foot-high solid screening or landscaping berm, or a berm. In terms of lighting, they must minimize light trespass and glare onto other properties. In terms of noise, no sound amplification will be allowed. In terms of duration, the conditional use will expire after 10 years, and can be renewed administratively for subsequent five-year periods. And in terms of plans, a site plan and landscape plan must be submitted and approved prior to any issuance of permits. In terms of context, properties to the north, east, south and west are all zoned rural residential. They are developed, the ones to the east, south and north are developed and in use for large lot, single-family residences. Property to the west is in agricultural use. Also, in June of this year, conditional use for vehicle storage yard to store boats and recreational vehicles was approved for the property immediately to the east of the subject site. In terms of history with this case, on August 9th, the Goddard Planning Commission considered the application and voted five to zero to recommend approval, subject to the recommended conditions. Two individuals spoke in opposition. On August 19th, the public hearing for this item was held at the Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission voted nine to three to recommend approval, subject to the recommended conditions. Two individuals spoke in opposition. On September 13th, the District Three Citizen Advisory Board considered the application and voted seven to one to recommend approval, subject to the recommended conditions. Two individuals spoke in opposition at that meeting. Protest petitions, I'll go to that map real quick. Valid protest petitions were submitted and totaled 85.64% of the protest area. In terms of actions, the recommended action is to approve the conditional use, subject to the conditions specified in the staff report. This would require four or five votes due to the protest petition exceeding 20% of the protest area. Alternatives include the following: you can deny the application and make alternative findings. This would require four or five votes in order to override the MAPC. You can also return the case to the MAPC with a statement specifying the basis for the failure to approve or deny. This would require a simple majority of three of five votes. And I'll take you through some of the images and graphics that we have here. So here's the aerial. The red area indicates the application area and proposed site for the storage. Here's a zoning map, shows rural residential is how the property is zoned and the surrounding properties. This is the map indicating urban, future urban growth areas, and this is in Goddard's. This is the site map that was submitted as part of the application. Again, you can see the storage area located in the north and east corner of the property. This is the protest map. Again, protest totaled well over 20%. And these are photos of the site. So this is looking at the subject site, the residence on the property. This is looking north, property to the north. This is looking south, property to the south. You can see the existing trees along the property in both of those photos. This is looking to the east. This is looking to the west, from the rear of the property. This is looking at the property to the north. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, are there any questions for Scott at this time? I was informed that we do have two people that want to speak publicly, but we usually call for that now, but they had asked if the, if the applicant was present and wanted to say anything before they speak. So not necessarily the chain of command that we go through, but out of respect, if you're the applicant and want to address anything, and of course, there could also be questions from the commission to the applicant or to, or to the staff, but good morning, and please state your name.
My name is Mark Savoy. I'm with Savoy Company Land Surveyors.
Okay. Thank you.
Agent for the applicant.
Thank you, Mark.
This whole process started, he started, he did this all the correct way. He discovered what it would take to be able to have a storage area on this property and contacted myself in regards to representing it and processing it. We performed the survey, prepared the exhibits showing a thousand-square-foot area, and he's done everything the proper way. There's a single-family home on the property. It is vacant at the moment. It will not be vacant when he develops this storage facility. Most of the screening is pretty well there. There's trees all around this property that serve as screening. It's got some blank areas that he's going to have some trees moved in and complete the, complete the screening process, both mainly to the east and to the south is where the bear spots are. You can see them on the aerial, I believe. I could say the house will be occupied, and the occupants will be responsible for ensuring the security of the vehicles, which are RVs and boats that'll be on the property. Through the whole process, he's been very interested in the concerns of the neighbors to the south, who are concerned about a lot of things that we're not sure quite how they come up with, that some of them being theft on their property and stuff like that, we're not quite sure how we would generate those kind of conditions, or if there's a current condition that way in the Goddard area that needs to be addressed anyway. Anyhow, just basically, like I say, he's doing everything the right way to go through this process. The property to the east that has storage on it had storage without going through this process and has rectified that by going through the process and, as stated, was approved. One difference is, that property can move their 10,000 square feet into various places. They just have to create a new site plan for MAPC to review. The way we presented it, we picked one spot, that's the spot it's going to be in, it's not going to be changed, not going to be moved. And anyhow, just look for your support, and if you would stand for any questions, you might have.
Okay. Mark, what was your last name again?
Savoy, S-A-V-O-Y.
Okay. All right, Mr. Savoy. Any questions for Mr. Savoy at this time? I don't see any, so we will move to the next phase of this, which is we will officially open the public comment, as people from the public have signed up to speak. First to sign up was Vicky Strelo. Strelo. Sorry about mispronouncing the name.
That's right, not a problem. Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Vicky Strelo, and I live at 838 South My name is Vicky Strelo, and I live at 838 South 199th Street West. You probably remember us from, we were here in June about vehicle storage unit, and now we're protesting the second one. We don't have anything against Mr. Alexander at all. He does not live on the property, and so we don't know him. He does live in Wichita. However, we're trying to protect our home and our property. No one is living there at the current time. The Cedric County Code states that only lots developed with a residence as a principal structure are eligible to apply for a conditional usage permit. The code clearly states resident and not dwelling unit, and the Kansas statutory construction provision defines residence as a place to which is adopted by a person, as a person's place of habitation, and to which, whenever a person is absent, the person has the intention of returning. Also, in the Cedric County Code, residence over 45 times in regard to a person living there is the definition of residence. Now, we don't believe the county should be allowed to define residence in their code as no one living there in some instances and someone living there in other instances. We believe that the permit should be denied because the primary resident does not live there, and if he rents the property, I mean, you know, they could provide security and things, but they would not probably take care of it as well as the owner would if the owner were living there. There are many vehicle storage units in Cedric County that do not affect neighborhoods, and we feel that those, they're out in agricultural areas, out away from residences, and we feel that is the spirit of what the vehicle storage yard was meant to be. Recently, we've had a couple of offers on our property, and our property is unique, and it's sought after because of its location and the water and the trees that we have on our property. We were told that the two people that wanted to make an offer would not offer as much or top dollar for a property because of the vehicle storage unit. The people that can afford the property just wouldn't want to live next to our vehicle storage unit, and now we're contending with a second one adjoining our property. My husband has gotten 98 protest signatures of the neighbors within one mile of our home, and 95% of those people in that area. None of these folks knew anything about the conditional uses for vehicle storage units. They're shocked about it, and they're upset like we were when we first found out about it. All of us feel that the conditional uses are not appropriate for our area or suitable. Our covenants are being ignored. We're not as secure as we used to be. Just last Sunday, one of our outdoor cameras was stolen, and we had to have Cedric County Sheriff's Office come out, deputies come out, and file a report. Our neighbor to the north of us, Mrs. Isler, was not able to be here today, but she sent a letter that she asked that I would read, and it states, "On September 17th, 2021, I filed a report with Cedric County Sheriff's Office, case number 21500, due to the possible threat trespassing intimidation, contamination, and fear. I found two red and white plastic 30-inch candy canes embedded on each side of our water well, diagonal-like pistols. This is our only water source, and this well is hidden with vegetation, shrubs, trees on the northwest corner of our property. Zero possibilities of children, friends, or relatives committing this act." And this is from Dolores Isler at 19601 West Maple. We appreciate you allowing us to speak. We know that you are all concerned with your constituents that you represent, and thank you.
Any questions? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Actually, I have a question for Justin Wagner then.
Okay. Do you want to do it now or the next speaker? Okay. Justin?
Yes, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor.
Thank you. One of the comments that Ms. Strelo had was that this property does not qualify because of residence in our zoning code. Can you address that, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to do so, Commissioner Dennis. The term residence is not defined in the zoning code. When you read through the zoning code, it says that when a term is not defined, it must be given its common ordinary meaning as the context may reasonably suggest. Some of the comments that have been made by Ms. Strelo refer to statutory definitions, not the zoning code, and also the Sedgwick County Code, which is actually different than the zoning code. The zoning code is its own joint zoning code between the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County. And the term residence in that, I think, the way it's been defined by Ms. Strelo is a very, a view that's based on the individual, whether they live there or not, but it's not judged in context of the zoning code. In particular, the zoning code says that this particular use is eligible for lots with a residence, with lots developed with a residence as the principal structure. In that case, my interpretation of that would be that if there's a home that's built there, that is developed with a residence as a principal structure. That is the case on this property, as Mr. Wadele indicated during his presentation. So it is eligible. Now, that doesn't mean that it has to be approved. I think you, all five of you, would utilize the golden factors, the considerations, like you do on any zoning case. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on that.
I don't have a question on residence. One other comment that was made was about covenants. Do covenants apply anywhere in the zoning code?
They generally do not. Commissioner Dennis, the, usually covenants, if there's like a restrictive covenant between property owners, a lot of times you'll see it with a development where there's restrictive covenants that have been applied and maybe enforced by the homeowners association. Traditionally, those are private covenants that can be enforced by private property. Owners may run with the land, but usually government and zoning is not based on what restrictive covenants between private properties may exist. The zoning is the public restriction on the use of the property.
Thank you. That's all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I don't see any other questions. Next up is Jim Strelo. Good morning. State your name and address.
My name is Jim Strelo. I live at 838 South 199th Street, Goddard, Kansas. What you're being handed right now is the petition that we distributed with the map of the area, which we covered with a petition on the second sheet. And the third, fourth, and fifth sheet shows you a worksheet of the area of the houses which supported our petition to restrict the, to change the zoning to, on it. The planning code uses the word, in the planning code, it uses the word "appropriate and suitable" to describe the criteria to be used for zoning code. I canvassed the area around the home within the petitionary with the petition and asked for people to read and sign it. The area covered one mile south, one mile east, one mile north, and one mile south of our house. We received 98 signatures that represented over 100 pieces of the property, supporting the opposition to the vehicle storage yard and the conditional use of the area. On the second sheet right there, the second page of the packet you were given, it gives you a breakdown of the area right there. Of that percentage, right, 95% of the people were, supported our appeal for restricting the zoning on that area, or not allowing the zoning in our area. That's an unbelievable number to believe, that people, that we got 95% of the people, but the second, the sheets after that will support that, and you can verify that with the signature that was in your package of all the people that signed the petition right there. Their addresses and people's names were all attached to that at that time. It's not in this package, but it is in the package that my wife delivered to you earlier on it. I'll tell you about a couple of people in the area right there. Jim and Sylvia Curson, which have lived in Goddard area for over, for, their family has lived in the Goddard area over 100 years, right there. Their saying to me was, I can't believe my grandfather and my father would be rolling over in their grave if they knew that things like this were going to happen to the area right there. Another gentleman right down the street, which just lost his wife when I was talking to him, he turned around and he said, "I haven't heard anything about it around here." And the sign that was in the front yard, it was supposed to have been there for a period of time, was only there for maybe seven days, and then they took it down. People there saw it, and they wondered why that sign came down so quickly, and they thought that things didn't happen. So when I was going around talking to them, they turned around and were shocked to hear the fact off of it. I talked to another resident up there on a Saturday morning. I turned around and called him. I rang his ring doorbell, and the ring doorbell turned around, and he answered it, and he said, I told him what I was there for, and he says, "Are you for or against it?" And I turned around, and I said, "I'm against it." He says, "I'll be right back." He drove back, which is probably 25 miles, to turn around and sign the petition that Saturday morning for me. There's a gentleman in the Elkeridge area right there, which are the new housing area, which is about a half mile to the east right there. These are high-end houses that's there. All of them, that area right there was overwhelmingly in favor of our appeal on the petition, or asking for you to deny it. There's a owner of the, one of the owners in the house was a person that was the chairman of the homeowners association in that area. And he turned around, and he made a comment about it, that, "Why weren't we notified over here?" Also, on the petition were marine, a marine, and other people in the area were like a marine, anesthesiologist, a business owner, a number of residents that are retired, all sorts of them. All of them had the same comment to be made. No idea that the county was doing this. All these folks were upset and signed, and signed the petition. Number of people, the number of people in the, the people and the number are real that reflects this. These are not made-up facts or anything else like that. These are, you can look by the worksheets and everything else like that, and they are real individuals that supported it. 95% is an awful big number to come up with, off of it. What I want you to realize, what I did was really easy, and the fact that when I went around to people, all I had to do was tell them where the storage yards are going to be and how it affected them. And they all would easily, eagerly sign the petition. I didn't brainwash anybody. I didn't twist any arms or anything else like that. These are real individuals in the area. This reflects what people, what this reflects is what people think is appropriate and suitable for our area. It's not what the county thinks is appropriate and suitable for our area. It's what the residents of our area thinks is appropriate for our area. We are asking you to protect our property and the quality of life we have. Any questions about what we have right there?
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions? I don't see any at this time, so thank you. Anybody else from the public address the commission on this item? Okay?
Mark Savoy, agent for the applicant. There is a requirement for a thousand-foot radius ownership list, and a thousand-foot radius from this property was notified. Even I would be incensed if somebody told me there was going to be a vehicle storage yard on four acres. That sounds like a stockpile of junk in, over the entire property, which is not the case in this situation. It's 1,000 square feet of screened area, and I just kind of wanted to be sure and remind you of that. And so of all those people, I mean, a lot of those people are definitely outside of that notification area, and that's why they didn't get notified.
Right. I think we're all reminded of that. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I think for the person that just spoke, I am curious, how many vehicles will fit in this area that's been defined on the, you need to come back to the podium, sir? How many vehicles will fit in this area?
That's a real good question. I suppose there could be probably easily 40 to 50 vehicles. There's got to be room to maneuver, park them, take them out, bring them back.
What type of vehicles are we talking about?
These are RVs, and it's restricted to RVs and boats.
Okay. And what about inoperable?
No inoperable vehicles are allowed. And that's part of the agreement with MAPC.
Probably have some more questions on that line of questioning. They'll talk, after the public hearing is complete, I'll ask my questions to Scott. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Being none, we will close the public comment portion of this hearing, and we'll return back to the bench for further discussion or questions. Anybody have any further questions? Commissioner Cruz?
I just have one quick question. Did you put your house on the market?
No. We just have offers because it's a unique property.
Would you mind coming to the podium?
No, our property is not on the market. We just get offers. You know, we get letters in the mail, and people call and say, "Is your property for sale?" Because it is so unique.
So you've had a couple of people just mention?
Right.
That, okay. So you haven't really tested the market to say that you put a sign in your yard, and you've had multiple people come through, and you're hearing a lot of feedback. You've had two people.
Two people recently, but, you know, on the average, we probably get four or five, four or five a year. People wanting to purchase our property because it's unique and you can't find it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. We're, so we're back to the questions for Scott, or anybody have any other questions? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a question for Scott. So this list presented by one of the opponents talks about asphalt, concrete plant, a burn site, oil and gas drilling, and other things, rock crushing, transfer station. I can certainly understand why someone might be opposed to those. It comes down to the last one here. It says vehicle storage yard. Does that, does that include things like a salvage yard that you might see around town?
No, and, good question. No, this explicitly prohibits inoperable vehicles.
I know this does. I'm saying the term vehicle storage yard, as it's used in this list.
No.
Would that normally include a salvage yard?
It prohibits vehicles that aren't working. Yeah, that would fall under another.
So if there's a salvage yard in the community somewhere, what's that classified as?
Wrecking and salvage.
Wrecking and salvage, okay. But again, I think that this description is not very descriptive. I hate to say it, because it opens up all kinds of ideas in my mind what it could be. Is there, please review once again, what's the requirement for screening around this?
Yeah. Requirement for screening is solid screening, at least six feet in height, or they can substitute landscaping and/or a berm. And in this case, as you've seen from the site photos, they've got tree rows surrounding the property. There may be a few spots where they either need to install new landscaping, additional landscaping, or they can choose to put in a solid screening fence is typically what's used.
Do you know what their intent is right now on the, like on?
I do not, and I would defer to the agent on that question.
Okay. It's okay. If he comes back up for some other question, maybe he can answer the question at that point, but that's all my questions for now. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. One question for Scott. Again, I want to verify, the vehicles have to be operable, correct?
That is correct.
And can they do major maintenance on them?
No, they cannot.
Okay. And the property, it's limited in size, they can't go beyond that?
That is correct. And in this case, they, the application area has been identified, so they're limited even further than the property to the east was. And 10,000 square feet is what, what would be allowed if this is approved.
And there are screening requirements, there are paving type, it couldn't be rock and so forth, but there are a lot of other requirements that are required, that are part of this application.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, that's all questions for Scott. I understand the concern of the Strelos, and I appreciate the effort that they went to, to talk with the neighbors. There is a large number of folks that have opposition to this, and we are aware of that, and do take it into consideration, but it's only one of a number of, of things that we look at. We have the golden rules that we have to comply with as we make any kind of decisions. And we have to look at the length of time that facility, or property has been not used for any type of, of operations such as this. We have to look at the surrounding area. So, again, this is just one on, as far as the opposition of the neighbors. I'm a very strong supporter of, of land rights. Each and every individual has some rights to use their land as they see fit, as long as that it meets the requirements of our zoning code. So, I do not have a problem with this application. So, I don't see any other comments at this time, so I'll move that we take the recommended action by both the Metropolitan Planning Commission and the Citizens Advisor Board. Thank you.
I'll second that motion. Did you have any questions, Mr. Howell? Commissioner Howell, sorry.
Chairman, I do have a question. If it would be permissible to the Chairman, I'd like to ask the Mr. Strelo one question.
Yeah, that's fine.
Come to the podium. This is a pretty, pretty good document you handed out, appreciate that very much. Is this what the petition signers saw when they signed the petition?
That is exactly what they saw. The statement on that first where you were questioning that, that is a quote from your zoning code.
Okay. I, I'm, I don't, I don't know if they, I mean, as this is presented to me, it is very alarming if I don't know much about what, if I don't understand the, the proposal today, this is pretty alarming. Did they know that what's really being proposed here is a 40 to 50 vehicle storage yard that would be behind screening on the back part of a property? Because this, as it says, it talks about transfer stations, and mining, quarrying, and rock crushing, a burn site, I mean, that would be very detrimental potentially. Did they understand what's actually being proposed, though?
Yes, they did. A lot of them questioned me over it, because they, they asked about the Henninger's are right around the corner, which were approved in June. And they were questioning how that got done at the same time. Same people were questioning the same thing at that time.
Some of the, we don't actually have a copy of the, of the petition signatures, and I, I wish that you had provided that as well, but you.
I got a copy, I got the original right there in my, my pile.
It's okay. I don't have it in front of me right now, it's just.
Okay.
And there's also some comments on here, which I find to be a little bit speculative. We don't know for sure, which makes this hard, because one thing I've always asked people to do, if you want to make an argument about property values, and I've said this for years on these types of cases, that people who want to make the argument need to provide some type of objective evidence saying, here's another similar site, here's what happened to property values before and after the thing went in, and I have yet to have someone present that to me at one of these types of hearings. But it says here, it will detrimentally affect property values. It will have a negative effect on the community as a whole. It will affect the community's quality of life, and all of those, those are pretty objective statements, but they're not qualified with any data. And I love data, as you probably know. So, I, I'm troubled by these statements as they're presented to the petition signers. And I'm also bothered because it includes all these other things that have nothing to do with this proposal today, things like a.
I was just trying, excuse me, I was just trying to show the people where their ordinance came from, right there. And it was, it was shown to be a conditional statement of that.
Thank you for your question, thank you for answering my question. I have one more question for Scott. Thank you, sir. Scott, to be clear, this is a conditional use, and the only thing that's allowed by this is what's been presented today, this.
That is correct.
Based on area for this purpose, this specific use.
That is correct.
So, these other things on here cannot.
That is correct.
You can't segue to these other things.
They would have to get other permissions in order to do that.
Okay. All right, I think I'm ready to vote. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Is there any other questions from the commission? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item O, CON 2021-00036, county conditional use to permit a temporary rock crusher on property zone SF20, single-family residential, generally located on the east side of North 135th Street West, and within one half-mile north of West 13th Street North.
Scott?
Yes, thank you.
Welcome back.
Yeah. So, this case is for a rock crusher, a temporary rock crusher. It's a conditional use, as well as similar to the first one. This site is located in the unincorporated county, generally northeast of the intersection of 135th and 13th Street. The application site is roughly six and a half acres in size, and it's a portion of a larger parcel that the applicant owns. The application site is currently zoned SF20, single-family residential. It is unplanted and is currently occupied by a pile of rubble, which you can see from this aerial. The recommendation for approval of this conditional use includes the following conditions, which I'm highlighting, but they're also explained in greater detail in the staff report. So, and these conditions, I might add, have been added due to the context in which this property sits, and I'll talk more about that in just a moment. But, in terms of timing, the operations would be limited from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday, so, no late or early hours, no weekend hours. In terms of duration, the operation would be limited to a maximum of 90 days over the course of 12 months. In terms of materials, only materials that are on-site would be processed, no additional materials could be brought to the site. And in terms of licensing, the rock crushing must be done by a licensed rock crushing company, licensed by KDHG, with operations meeting all the necessary permitting and regulations, and that includes air quality as well. In terms of the context, the properties to the north of the subject site are zoned SF20, single-family residential, and are in agricultural or large-lot residential use. Properties to the east of the subject site are zoned SF20 and vacant. Properties to the south of the subject site include SF20-zoned property, which is owned by the same owner as this subject site, and currently in agricultural use. Further south of those properties are ones zoned LC Limited Commercial with warehouse or self-storage on them. Property to the west is located in the city of Wichita, and you can see here on the zoning map that it's zoned SF5 and is developed with single-family homes and the Silverton addition. In terms of the history of this case, on August 19th, the public hearing for this item was held at the Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission voted nine to one to recommend approval, subject to the conditions recommended in the staff report. On September 13th, the District III Citizen Advisory Board considered the application and voted seven to one to recommend approval consistent with the MAPC recommendation and conditions. In terms of protest petitions, valid protest petitions were submitted and totaled 15.7% of the protest area. In terms of actions, the recommended action is to approve the conditional use, subject to the conditions specified in the staff report. This would require a simple majority due to the protests not exceeding 20% of the, of the area. In terms of alternatives, you can adopt the findings of the MAPC and authorize the chairman to sign the prepared resolution, which would require a simple majority, that's the recommended action. You can modify the findings of, for the case, and authorize the chairman to sign a prepared resolution, so it requires two-thirds majority in order to override MAPC. You can deny the application by making alternative findings, and again, override the MAPC, that would require four or five votes, or, as always, you can return the case to the MAPC for further consideration, which would require a simple majority, three of five votes. And with that, I'll pause, and then I'll take you through some of the graphics and images here. So, here's the aerial depicting the site, which is outlined in red, the pile of rubble. This is the zoning map, which was described earlier. This is the map from the comprehensive plan, showing that new residential is recommended for this location. Here's the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. It shows where the material is, that they'll be working on in their storage area. It's important to note that the storage in the current recommendation would only be allowed for the duration of the crushing operations, so the 12 months. This is the protest map. The protest, again, was under 20%. These are photos from the site. Some of the houses across the street. And one more quick note on this one is that this one is a little bit unique from what is normally recommended, in that in order to extend the timeframe of the operations, the applicant would have to go to the MAPC for approval of that. Typically, we do that as administrative function that staff can approve, but in this case, it's recommended that it would go to MAPC. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it.
I could, if I could interject just a minute. If you all have any ex parte communication.
Oh, yeah.
That's applicable to this case, unless you made it in the prior case and designated it, you need to make that now, before you begin discussing.
Okay, thank you, Patricia. Yeah, I'll, I do not recall that I've had any exhortation, communication.
That was actually what I had my light on for, is to say that I have had ex parte contact on this case. And then, after everyone else has an opportunity, if anyone else has, I have a couple of questions for Scott.
Okay, all right. I have had no, no ex parte communication in this case.
Okay.
None from Commissioner Lopez, and none from Cruz. So, thank you, Patricia, for reminding us. So, okay, back to the business. So, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Scott. Couple of questions, real quick. The 90 days, is that 90, say they start on 1 January, is that 90 days from 1 January, or is it 90 days of operation? How do, how do we define 90 days?
Sure. It is, it's not consecutive days, it is 90 days of operation within the 12-month period.
Okay. Good. And you've already said, stated that if they want to change anything, that they have to go back to the MAPC?
That is correct.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I have considered whether or not to amend this and require it to come back to the, to the Board of County Commissioners, but, because, guess who's going to get the phone calls? It won't be you.
Yes, sir.
But I trust you all to do your job well, and to keep in mind the feedback that we get up here on the bench, if anything goes awry with this conditional use. So, with that, after any other questions, I am ready to make a motion.
Okay. I probably need to ask if there's, this is also a public comment, if, unless we've got, Commissioner Howell, you got a question for staff?
Okay.
So, at this point, we'll open it up for public comment on this. Does anybody in the audience like to speak to this? I don't see any, so we will close the public comment, bring it back to the bench. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Isn't, I just, one question, isn't this the infamous rubble pile we talked about for years now?
That is my understanding, yes, it is.
I, I'm curious, do we know how long we've been, I, I think it's been, we've been talking about this for, I think as long as I've been the commissioner, I would think, at least, maybe longer than that.
It goes back quite a few years. I'm not exactly sure on the specifics on that one.
So, if they weren't going to crush this rock, and they don't plan on bringing materials in and out, they don't plan on bringing materials in to crush here, they plan on just getting rid of this rubble pile?
If approved as recommended, they would be prohibited from bringing in materials from other locations.
I think it's reasonable. The only other option would be just to haul it away somewhere in its current form. I don't know how big the pieces are, but it seems to me that this is pretty limited. And they also have to do, they have to wet the material down when they crush it, so it reduces dust. Is there any, any discussion about prevailing winds, that type of thing? Because I do see there's houses, potentially houses, I don't know if this is developed or not, but houses directly to the, to the west of this.
Yeah, there, there, no discussion, at least that I'm aware of, in terms of the prevailing winds, the measures that they put in place should take care of the dust regardless of where the winds are coming from.
Okay. All right. I, I think this is a very well-planned project, it's limited in every way, to make this, make this rubble pile go away, so I think it's a reasonable proposal today. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, and if I, this almost had state legislation influence, I mean, thanks to this case alone, changed the laws at the state level. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to answer Commissioner Howell's question, if they, if the requirement was to eliminate the rock crushing, and we just require them to haul it away, all of the protections that are in this conditional use go away also. So, the fact that they are not sprinkling water, keeping the dust down, hours of operation, length of operation, every single one of those conditions go away if we just say haul it away. So, this conditional use was written to help protect the community from the issues of eliminating this pile. And as Commissioner Howell and Scott mentioned, this has been something that's been going on as an issue for some time. The current owner of this pile is not the person that was responsible for getting it there. That person has sold it to a construction company, and they are well-equipped to remove this, and they have a limited time also. They, they can crush it and leave it on-site, but they can't leave it on-site forever. It has to be removed within 12 months. As a matter of fact, the complaints that I've received on this over the years, the current owner has tried to alleviate some of that by putting some berms up. All those berms that you saw were not there originally. Those were added, actually, just recently, as that construction company was doing 13th Street. This, we've talked about it a lot, I don't know if the other commissioners realize it, but this is one of the things that we went to Topeka for, to see if we could eliminate nuisances, and this was one of the three or four things that are throughout the county that have contributed us, asking Topeka for ability for our MABCD, and for legal and so forth, to go through and try and affect this.
Turn your mic on.
Nobody heard anything, I'm probably.
We did, we got picked up.
Anyway, I, I won't recap that, I apologize to those who are listening to us on KPTS and online, but this is an ongoing problem. It will not be solved without this conditional use. This conditional use places limits on what can be done. It also protects the neighbors from the problem with this, and with the problem with the, with eliminating this pile if these conditions weren't on there. So, with all that said, I make a motion that we approve as recommended by the MAPC and the Citizens Advisor Board.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other questions? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. If it's okay with the commission can, out of respect for Joe, and can we make a motion to, to move item R next on the agenda? Does that take a motion? Patricia, I'm not sure, you just wanted.
Mr. Chairman? Okay. I, I'm assuming I have the most comments on the next two items, I don't plan on making very many comments, probably about 30 seconds worth, and so if you want to just get on with it, that'd be fine with me.
Well, I was going to ask if anticipation, so, okay. Well, I was going to ask if anticipation, so, okay.
If you want to just press on, I think we can get through these pretty quickly as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Everybody, I'm getting nods. Okay, we'll continue on with the agenda as stated. Okay, next item, please.
Item P, a resolution creating new Cedric County personnel policies and procedures regarding dispute resolution.
Good morning, Sheena.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am back before you this morning to talk about Policy 4.503, which is dispute resolution. And you are getting some handouts right now in regards to that policy. The last meeting we met at was August 27th, and we were asked to send this policy along with our ethics policy out to departments for feedback. We did so from August 27th through September 8th. We received three responses from the departments. Many of those were just clarifying questions. But specifically in regards to dispute resolution, you will see on page three, Item C, number two, we have had communication with legal counsel and actually got that finalized this morning, that we will be removing that item because these, as the board creates a resolution that would create the leadership resolution hearing, we do want those open to the public for coma purposes. So that is one addition that we finalized just this morning. Other than that, we did not have any other feedback on that policy. So I'd stand for any questions.
Okay, so it's, is it, it mirrors what we talked about a month ago?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to, again, I know we, I did recommend some changes before, and I know those were adopted into these documents already. So having that, having that history, knowing that this has been a slowed-down process, and our departments and the organization have had a chance to see this and understand what's being discussed, I think it's respectful. I think it's the better way to go forward. I appreciate the delay. I'm sorry that it took time, but I think it was necessary. I don't think these are perfect documents, but I do know we can edit these in the future. So as we get, as we get used to them and begin to use them, I think we understand that we can edit these and improve them over time. So it's probably a good idea to get started on these two ideas. I do think that ethics is one of our huge needs in Cedric County. We need to have the best ethics policies in Cedric County. I'm a huge advocate for that discussion to continue across the spectrum, including elected officials. And so this is a good time to get started on these two policies today. And so, Mr. Chairman, I have no other comments on this item today, or the next item, or on the fire agenda as it comes up. I'll be supportive of all three, I'll be supportive of both of these, if you want to take them up together, or whatever. I'd be glad to make a motion at the appropriate time, or whatever you'd like me to do. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Well, if you'd like.
Chairman, for clarification, on the dispute resolution portion of it, one question that was brought up last time was how many facilitators, we would have employee facilitators for the meat resolution. And since we had met last time, we have almost 15 interested individuals that would be willing to be trained for that process. In addition to the handouts that you received, there's two copies of the ethics policy. Again, as Commissioner Howell mentioned, there's one that incorporates all of his edits and then the original version, and we had no issues with any of those edits.
Thank you for that. That's good information to know that you've got people interested in that already?
Yeah.
For training. Okay, we'll bring this back then. So we have two items, a code of ethics and a dispute resolution. Those are, those are separate agenda items, though, right? Or not? Okay. If it's the will of the commission, well, why don't you go ahead and make your proposal or your motion?
If it's acceptable to legal and my colleagues here, I would like to make a motion, we would adopt, adopt the resolutions for the dispute resolution policy as well as the employee code of ethics policies, Items P and Q.
Second.
It's a motion and a second, to adopt both items. And that's okay?
Yes.
All right. Motion and a second. Any other comments?
And just for clarification, is that the ethics as amended with your edits?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Is that clear to the commission, that we know which one we're adopting?
Okay.
That's motion and a second, and no other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Sheena, thanks to whoever and everybody, legal and everybody, to work through this. And let's hope that this, I hope it's received within the employees as a positive step for going forward, so.
We appreciate the support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item R, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on September 30th, 2021.
Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks for being flexible.
Well, thank you for the thought of trying to move me forward. Appreciate it. There's one item recommended for your approval that is a result of the meeting in the Board of Bids and Contracts on September 30th, and that item is the Kronos Telestaff Maintenance and Support for Various Departments. This recommendation is to accept a call from UKG, which is Kronos Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $63,591.26. It's effective January 1st, 2022, and will go through the balance of the year December 31st, 2022. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay, is there any questions on that? Being done, I'll make a motion that we approve the Board of Bids and Contracts as presented. It's a motion and a second. Being no other comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioners recommend approval of Consent Items S through AD this morning.
Okay. Commissioners, does anybody have any questions or any consent items need to be polled? I don't see any, so I will make a motion to approve Consent Items S, as in SAM, through AD.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. No other questions. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Okay, we could adjourn now to the fire and then come back for committee reports and others, but we will have an executive session that we will have to come back after, after we recess, because it's a 30-minute and we will run overtime. So we can just plow through everything else. But why don't we, why don't we adjourn right now and take up the fire?
Commissioner, could you make the recess?
The recess, okay. We will recess the regular meeting of the governing body of County Commission and call to order the Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
President.
Commissioner Dennis.
President.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
President.
Chairman Meitzner.
President and I. Okay. Okay. Okay, next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Anybody from the public like to address the commission on the fire agenda, or on the Fire District? I don't see any, so we will close the public agenda. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Special Fire Meeting Minutes of August 5th, 2021.
Okay, Commissioners, as we've done in the past, I'd like to present that we combine Items A, B, C, and D, which are the minutes of August 5th, August 18th, August 25th, and September 8th of the Fire District. If it's okay with the commission, I will make a motion to approve all of those, I, A through D.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Tom Stills, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of Consent Items E and F, which for the public are the policies that were just ratified during the general meeting.
Okay, thanks, Tom. And so we will, I'll make a motion that, well, is there any questions? I think that's good, that it's just a consent, because we've already covered this. So with that said, I'll make a motion that we approve Consent Items E through F.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Is there any other business on the Fire District from the commission? And I don't see anything, so we will adjourn the Fire District meeting and will return from recess of the regular commission meeting. Got those words right, Patricia?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're back. So we're back. Where are we? We are under, Madam Clerk?
Committee reports.
Next item. Committee reports. Commissioners, do you have anything to report on, from committees that you serve on? Commissioner Dennis.
Real briefly, talk about the zoo. Remember, we've got wild lights coming up. I've already got my tickets. Hopefully, everybody else does. You can purchase them at the zoo. I plan on going out Friday night to see the wild lights. And one of the things, great thing that's happened at the zoo, we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, is that the Slosson Big Cat Trek has opened. So I urge everyone to go out to the zoo to see both of those events. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, David. Commissioner, that was very impressive, taking the ride out to where the Big Cat displays to see all of the, all the, and I would like to thank the Slosson family as well. Is it David, Mark? I can't remember which one was at the presenting. He lives in Denver, has lived there for 25-plus years, and just mentioned that with his mom and dad's encouragement and everything else, that him and his brothers and his sister want to, they want to continue to support the zoo and things that are good in the Wichita area. And even though they all get questioned about, why don't you do this in Denver, and why don't you do this in Oklahoma City? And their response is they're committed to the Wichita. So it's just a great foundation. I want to thank their parents, that recently deceased, but that's really, thank you, Slosson family, for sure. So, any other, any other committee reports? I don't see anything at this time, so we will close the committee reports. Next item.
Other.
Anybody have anything under other? The lights are flashing. Commissioner Dennis.
Real quickly, we do have, we just had a meeting about Fire District Number One, and we need to remember our firemen that passed as a result of their service to our community. So the 20th Annual Firefighter's Recognition is going to be this Sunday at 1:30 at the Firefighters Memorial, so I urge everyone to go out and then recognize the folks that have given their lives for our community. One final comment is that I do have an opening on my Citizens Advisory Board, so if anyone is interested, please go onto the website and put in an application, and I hope to fill that in the near future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You bet. Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. There has been news today of the passing of Rudy Love. He was just in here. We were able to honor him a couple of weeks ago, and today there was word that he had passed away. So sincere condolences go out to his family. We lost a legend. Also, switching gears, the Moving Wall is moving along in Valley Center. There is, the last in-person meeting is October 11th, next Monday. So if you want to join that, there are other volunteer opportunities, but it should be a pretty great event. The dates for this are October 21st in Valley Center. If you have any other information, or have any other questions, please let me know. I'm sure any commissioner up here could help you. I know that we're all pretty involved in it, so that's it.
Thank you. And Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz reminded me that our Registered Deeds Office will be at the Moving Wall event to be able to take the DD 214s from any veteran and to issue an ID card. In addition, on November 6th, when we have our Veterans Day Parade, our Registered Deeds Office will be at the Boathouse to do the same thing. So there are two opportunities coming up in the near future. I want to thank our Registered Deeds Office for providing that service to our veterans. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And I, earlier in our agenda, I had a vacancy on the Citizens Advisory Board for District One, and I've had a few questions, and so I have had some previous applications to fill those spots, but I'd like to open it back up as well to make sure anybody that would like to serve on District One, that they get in contact on the website and go through the process. And the other thing is that we will not be having a commission meeting next week. There might be a staff meeting on Tuesday, but we're not, got some out-of-town conflicts, and so we will not be having a meeting next week. All right. What else? Anybody else? Okay, don't see anything under other. So we will recess today's meeting for, Tom, you think, to be safe, the ARPA meeting is from noon to 1:00, right?
I believe it's noon to 1:30, sir.
1:30?
What they're advertising, yes.
Okay, so we want to reconvene at 2:00? Okay. I'll make a motion that we recess today's meeting. I'm sorry for those that are watching on KTPS, you're going to have to re-engage on our website, but I believe when we return, we will be, we will go to an executive session